Abuse's greatest fear is the light. That's why we're here today bringing light to survivors, to bring them hope and to bring them healing. And we walk for those who have not yet been able to step out into that light.
I want to say today that our community will not tolerate abuse and I'm here walking in high heels to send that message loud and clear and in a very fashionable way.
Welcome to part seven of Sun Rail 101 arriving. I'm your host Mike Wach. Well, we're almost finished with our first drive on Central Florida's Sun Rail commuter rail system. We've arrived at our destination station and we're ready to head to work.
Remember your train boarding etiquette. Passengers getting off the train have the right. Wait until the doorways are cleared before boarding. Passengers onboard needing to use the lift or the mini high platform should inform the conductor before alighting the station.
Passengers with mobility impairments can use the mini high platform to disembark.
On boarding exits of the train, remember to let people off the train before you board.
No matter how you exit the train, remember to tap off at the platform reader. Forgetting to do so can cost you up to $3 over your regular fare. Simply get off the train, walk over to the reader, tap off, wait for the beep, and go.
Now it's time to get you to work or home. There are a lot of different options to get you where you're going. Walking, biking, car or vehicle, and maybe even a workplace shuttle.
But if you're riding lanes or boat lanes to your final destination, you'll want to stop at the ticket vending machine and get a transfer ticket so you can take advantage of the free transfer between Sun Rail and the bus.
Both Sun Rail and local law enforcement want you to be safe.
We're at our destination, but we're not done with our trip yet. Come back for part eight and learn about connectivity options. I'm your host Mike Wach. This is Sun Rail 101.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the June 15th, 2015 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. If you could silence your mobile devices or turn them on vibrate or do something like that. So today, we're going to begin with an invocation offered by Asharayu Ashak Shakla, who is the priest of the Hindu Society of Central Florida and he has been so for the last six years. Twenty-five years ago Hindus in Orlando met at a Lutheran church in Orlando and as the population grew, the need for a temple became imperative in 1982. The Hindu Temple Society of Greater Orlando was formed and in 1987, the society became known as the Hindu Society of Central Florida. And in 1995, the Hindu Temple of Central Florida was opened in Castleberry. You may remain seated or we're all going to stand up here and the invocation will follow the invocation, I'm sorry, the pledge will follow the invocation and that will be led today by District 5 Commissioner Regina Hill.
Namaste. Om. Bhadram Karane Vistranu Ya Mudeva. Bhadram Bakshem Akshavir Jatra. Sthiray Rangai Tushthavagum Sastanuvi. Swastinah Indrovrithasrava. Swastinah Poosha Vissvaveda. Swastinastariksho Varishtanemi. Om. Shanti. 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 Om. Om. Deuhau Shanti Randa Rikshagum Shanti. Prithavi Shanti Apaha Shanti Au Shadaya. Shanti Banaspataya Shanti Ravisvaideva. Shanti Brahma Shanti Sarvagum Shanti. Shanti Reva Shanti Samah. Shanti Redhi. Om. Shanti. 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 Om. This mantra from the Hindu scripture, from the Vedas and the meaning, we recited that the earth, fire, water, sky, all the five elements and everything should be calm and peace and let everyone become happy and prosperous. Thank you.
I. Congratulations. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll officially call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item of business is the minutes from the agenda review and special city council meeting from May the 18th. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ings. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Awards, presentations, and recognitions. Let's start with our fantastic wellness coordinator Debbie to present awards related to our wellness program. Debbie.
Good afternoon. The city of Orlando started its workplace wellness program in the mid 1980s before most people heard of workplace wellness. The city has built its wellness program on a strong infrastructure with behavior modification, education program, fitness programming, plus onsite screening and prevention services. The success of the city's wellness program is built on strong leadership support from Mayor Buddy Dyer, city commissioners, and the senior management team. We are especially thankful to Deborah Gerard, Deputy CIO, under CIO Byron Brooks' direction. We would like to thank all the employees that serve as wellness champions, representing all work locations and the city's diverse workforce. The city of Orlando has been recognized as a leader in employee wellness. The city has received the following awards. Orlando Business Journal Healthiest Employers Award, American Heart Association Fit Friendly Goal Company Award, Get Active Orlando Healthy Workplace Award, Florida Hospital Healthy Workplace Wellness Award, Orlando Sentinel Top 100 Companies for Working Families, Fitness Management Magazine Nova 7 Innovation Award in Facility Design, Construction, and Recreation, and the Florida Surgeon General and Secretary of Health, Healthy Weight Community Champion. Wellness Works has just completed one of our signature events allowing for our employees and their departments to earn recognition and awards as well. It's our Employee Fitness Challenge. Over 700 employees from every department competed in 43 events. The challenge offered something for everyone, from tug of war and dodgeball to a non-competitive walk. Employees earned ribbons in their age group and overall medals for individual and team events. And you may be surprised how competitive the 60-year-old age group is for many of our folks. When surveyed, 98% of our employees stated that it encouraged them to be more active and 96% stated that it helped work relationships. All the employees who participated earned points for their departments in two divisions, participation and achievement points. We would like to recognize the top three departments in each category. And we would like a representative from each department along with the wellness champions to join the mayor and council for a group photo after their announcement. In the participation category, moving way up was executive offices in third place, in second place, family parks and recreation, and in first place, housing and community development. Our achievement points category winners in third place, family parks and recreation, second place economic development, and in first place, our public works team. Congratulations. So if I could ask you all to join us for a group photo with all our winners?
It's us too, right? Come on, it's us.
Yeah, how many events did you guys do?
Yeah.
Just saying.
Me? You mean more than four? Did you? You did more than four, you can come down.
I didn't. I didn't do any.
Come on. Go for it.
Robert, we're gonna stand, Robert. You said to stand up here. Stand up here. Here we go. I was gonna say, who else did it?
Ow. Come straight back in.
Was it just me?
Yeah. Wait, wait, wait. Here, slide down.
No, you did some stuff.
I did, I did four, I did four events. You guys are wuss.
Hey, I did triathlon. That counts as three.
That doesn't count. Rick got his summer haircut.
All right. Stewart, we held the team down.
We held the team down. Me and Patty, we held the team down. Thanks a lot, appreciate your participation. You too.
Don't embarrass you guys.
We even have a golf one. Why don't we do golf?
What did you do?
Huh?
What'd you do?
I did crispy.
Commissioner Hill, would you introduce the next presentation?
Walk in.
Did you know you were doing that?
Yes, sir. The next presentation will be for the partnership of these fabulous organization, GOBA, that's Greater Orlando Builders Association and the work that they have started to do in assisting me with in Ivy Lane Corner.
Okay, you want me to read the process? Some folks want to talk first.
Sure.
Commissioner Scott Merritt, Greater Orlando Builders Association. Commissioner Hill, thank you for everything. Really have no words to present other than our gratitude of partnership and the great people of Ivy Lane. So thank you for the opportunity.
So, City of Orlando proclamation. Under the leadership of President David Braceley's, the Greater Builders Association, I need my glasses, it turns out.
Not those. Ed, take a picture.
Awesome.
They got a tiger look to them.
Goes with your outfit.
GOBA Foundation President Dave Schmidt, see how much better that is, and Scott Merritt, Executive Director. They have formed a partnership with the City of Orlando's District 5 Commissioner Regina Hill to give back to Ivy Lane Elementary School, Ivy Lane Home Apartments, and Ivy Lane Community Center. Whereas learning about Ivy Lane, GOBA reached out to its more than 700 company members to hold a book drive in March that generated 400 new and used books and created a community library. In April, the association took their efforts a step further by instituting a mentorship program at Ivy Lane Elementary, offering tutoring assistance and just someone willing to listen. And whereas through their, this partnership, the Greater Orlando Builders Association will seek to continue the mentorship program into the next school year. And whereas we are thankful for the dedication, devotion, professionalism of the Greater Orlando Builders Association. Quote, "While we build communities for the continued growth in Central Florida, it is important we also focus on our established communities and ways of helping others, especially the youth. Without a doubt, they are our future." Now therefore, we, Mayor Buddy Dyer and Commissioner Regina I. Hill, District 5, hereby do proclaim Saturday, May 30th, 2015 as Greater Orlando Builders Association Day in the City of Orlando. Okay, Commissioner Ings, if you would introduce the other proclamation.
Thank, thank you, Mayor and City Council. According to Visit Orlando last year, over 773,000 tourists from Brazil selected Orlando as their place to vacation. Today, I am honored to present to the City of Orlando, the person who had the vision to bring South Americans from Brazil to Orlando. Mr. Eduardo Vasconcellos, president of Contiq Franstar, one of the largest travel companies in Brazil, started bringing tourists to Orlando theme parks from day one and the very first moment that they opened. As a result, Mr. Vasconcellos is the promoter behind the surge in Latin American tourists making Orlando a favorite vacation spot and a place to call home. Now, I know many people are wondering how Orlando became a favorite for so many tourists. Well, Mr. Vasconcellos is the man who has substantially contributed millions of dollars by bringing these tourists to Orlando and presenting great hospitality to them and further strengthening our tourism industry. Because of the thousands of tourists, Mr. Eduardo Vasconcellos, Mr. Mayor Dyer, I am very pleased to present the proclamation and would ask that you would please read the proclamation concerning Mr. Vasconcellos.
Proclamation. Whereas Mr. Eduardo Vasconcellos and his wife Maria Jose Vasconcellos have been trailblazers in the travel industry since opening their business Contiq Franstar in 1955, and whereas Vasconcellos along with their sons expanded their family, owned travel business in Brazil with a handful of employees to more than 500 employees with offices in Rio, Recife, Salvador, and Sao Paulo. And whereas Mr. Vasconcellos has created extraordinary travel packages, exciting visitors to shop in Orlando and spend an additional $8 million annually, thus creating jobs and businesses in Orlando and also leading the increase in the number of Brazilian tourists vacationing in Orlando to almost a million in 2014. Now therefore, we, Mayor Buddy Dyer and Commissioner Samuel B. Ings, District 6, hereby do proclaim June 15th, 2015 as Eduardo Vasconcellos and Contiq Franstar Day in the City of Orlando.
And joining him is his wife and two sons.
Okay, Commissioner Ings, if you would introduce the other proclamation.
Thank, thank you, Mayor and City Council. According to Visit Orlando last year, over 773,000 tourists from Brazil selected Orlando as their place to vacation. Today, I am honored to present to the City of Orlando, the person who had the vision to bring South Americans from Brazil to Orlando. Mr. Eduardo Vasconcellos, president of Contiq Franstar, one of the largest travel companies in Brazil, started bringing tourists to Orlando theme parks from day one and the very first moment that they opened. As a result, Mr. Vasconcellos is the promoter behind the surge in Latin American tourists making Orlando a favorite vacation spot and a place to call home. Now, I know many people are wondering how Orlando became a favorite for so many tourists. Well, Mr. Vasconcellos is the man who has substantially contributed millions of dollars by bringing these tourists to Orlando and presenting great hospitality to them and further strengthening our tourism industry. Because of the thousands of tourists, Mr. Eduardo Vasconcellos, Mr. Mayor Dyer, I am very pleased to present the proclamation and would ask that you would please read the proclamation concerning Mr. Vasconcellos.
Proclamation. Whereas Mr. Eduardo Vasconcellos and his wife Maria Jose Vasconcellos have been trailblazers in the travel industry since opening their business Contiq Franstar in 1955, and whereas Vasconcellos along with their sons expanded their family, owned travel business in Brazil with a handful of employees to more than 500 employees with offices in Rio, Recife, Salvador, and Sao Paulo. And whereas Mr. Vasconcellos has created extraordinary travel packages, exciting visitors to shop in Orlando and spend an additional $8 million annually, thus creating jobs and businesses in Orlando and also leading the increase in the number of Brazilian tourists vacationing in Orlando to almost a million in 2014. Now therefore, we, Mayor Buddy Dyer and Commissioner Samuel B. Ings, District 6, hereby do proclaim June 15th, 2015 as Eduardo Vasconcellos and Contiq Franstar Day in the City of Orlando.
And joining him is his wife and two sons.
Okay, we're gonna move into the mayor's update and Commissioner Sheehan has a very special anniversary or just had one. I want to personally recognize her for 15 years of service to the citizens of Orlando. Thank you for your service and your leadership. I gave her her pin and her certificate earlier today in my office, but congratulations Commissioner Sheehan. So commissioners, you'll recall that we recently purchased seven foreclosed apartment complexes in the Lake Sunset, Clear Lake, and Mercy Drive neighborhoods that were vacant and boarded up and a blight on the west side of Orlando. And in an effort to transform the neighborhoods that surround Orange Center and Ivy Lane, we want to provide safe and attractive housing. We sold one of those properties along Orange Center to lift Orlando to construct new affordable workforce housing. And we are going to be seeking redevelopment proposals from organizations to build sustainable, high-quality housing on those remaining properties along Cottage Hill Road and Mercy Drive. So I know there's a lot of interest in that. Brooke told me that there were already 45 inquiries or so. For more information on that, go to the real estate portion of the cityoforlando.net website. I'd like to invite everybody to join the chief and the commissioners and I for a groundbreaking celebration for our new Orlando Police Department headquarters on Thursday, June 25th, at 10:30. It is expected to be complete in 2016 in almost 100,000 square foot state-of-the-art facility that will improve department operations, use the latest technology, and make the department more accessible to our community and spur redevelopment along the South Orange Blossom Trail. Keeping Orlando moving means continuing to be a priority in terms of transit and multiple modal forms of transportation. Part of this effort includes the city's commitment to investing in improving our current infrastructure. And on Monday, June 29th, at 11:00, we will celebrate the completion of the restoration of the historic Amtrak station that was originally built in 1926 and continues to provide long-distance rail service to over 160,000 passengers a year. I'd like to thank again Commissioner Sheehan for her leadership on that project. This Wednesday, in the City Hall Rotunda, I'll join District 2 Commissioner, Commissioner Tony Ortiz, and the Puerto Rican Federal Affairs Administration Executive Director Juan Hernandez Marial. Yes, his name is Mayor Oriel. To announce a partnership between the Ola Office and the Puerto Rico Federal Affairs Administration in recognition of the many, many Puerto Rican citizens that have moved here to Central Florida. Fireworks at the Fountain is July 4th at Lake Eola Park, beginning at 4 o'clock. We'll have a couple of stages and a spectacular fireworks show beginning at 9:10 PM. Another anniversary that we're celebrating, just yesterday in fact, is the 10-year anniversary of our Pathway for Paramore initiative. We have made great strides. Every measure that is a positive measure is up. Every measure that is a negative measure is down in the neighborhood. And when we began the program, I think one of the most striking things is we didn't have a senior, a single senior in high school that was going to college. And this year, every one of them is going to college. How about that? And on today's agenda, we have amoeba grant to Little Kings and Queens Learning Center, which is a daycare on West Central in Paramore that is again another piece of improving that neighborhood. On today's agenda, we have 19 mayor's matching grant projects. And funding these, the city is able to support neighborhood associations, not-for-profits, and schools to implement and provide programs that engage our city's youth, improve education, and address neighborhood needs. I see a whole group of handsome individuals that are part of our dragon boat team there in the black. So with you guys, as well as anybody else that is receiving a mayor's matching grant today, please stand and be recognized. We are also, okay, that's good. Thank you all for being here. The Science Center has launched a multi-year fundraising effort and it is such a valuable asset to our community, especially as we focus on our STEM education and STEM skills and STEM jobs, that our research shows only about 20% of our adult population has the skills to work in those areas of jobs. So we're very appreciative of what the Science Center does. So on our agenda, we have an investment from the city towards the Science Center campaign for making capital improvements to the building. And I want to recognize Joanne Newman, president of the Orlando Science Center, who's here with us today. Joanne. So, one last item. We've got some good news coming from SitePlan, which is a company that started in the city's small business incubator. They provide mobile and cloud-based software for multifamily real estate management companies to better administrate their assets. So on today's agenda, they expect to create 28 new high-wage jobs over the next three years and we have a resolution of support for their growth through the state's QTI program and the CRA's High Value High Wage Program. I'd like to recognize Joseph Westlake, who is CEO of SitePlan, who is here with us today. Joseph? Okay, so we will move on to the consent agenda and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. And we give each of our commissioners an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda, as well as to update you on issues of importance from their district. We have an agenda review meeting prior to this meeting where we discuss whether there are items on the consent agenda that ought to be heard at new business or deferred. And we agreed to move item C1, which relates to the creation of additional slot of membership for Metro Plan to new business. And we agreed to defer one of the items from agenda item C5, and that's number one, item number one on the consent agenda, C5 item, and that is variance 20 dash, or 2015 dash 0033. There were several commissioners that had questions about that, so we will defer that particular item to the next meeting. So with that, we rotate the order that commissioners have the opportunity to address the items and Commissioner Hill is first up today.
Thank you. I know there were some emails that I received from several constituents and residents here in the city regarding ordinance, the second read, number 10. They were concerned that nursing homes couldn't be picketed or mixed-use income, mixed-use income, I apologize. I'm thinking about that housing in Paramore. But mixed-use facilities and also commercial buildings. And I did get clarity from, from our legal department that organizations still will be able to have freedom of speech and picket nursing homes and those buildings that are mixed-use, only if, if you're picketing in front of someone's window, but you was, your freedom of speech will not be infringed on by this ordinance. So I just wanted to make sure. I will be voting yes on that.
And Commissioner Hill is first up today.
Thank you. I know there were some emails that I received from several constituents and residents here in the city regarding ordinance, the second read, number 10. They were concerned that nursing homes couldn't be picketed, or mixed-use income, mixed-use income, I apologize. I'm thinking about that housing in Paramore. But mixed-use facilities and also commercial buildings. And I did get clarity from our legal department that organizations still will be able to have freedom of speech and picket nursing homes and those buildings that are mixed-use, only if you're picketing in front of someone's window. But your freedom of speech will not be infringed on by this ordinance. So I just wanted to make sure. I will be voting yes on that ordinance. I also would like to acknowledge a young lady that is in the audience, and she's from the University of Florida. She's a third-year law student that I met with Orlando Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority at a women's brunch. And she is shadowing Amy this week in our Law Department and also me today. If Yasmin Watson can stand up, and we'll applaud this bright young lady that is being introduced to the city government. I'd like to also congratulate the Jones High Class of 2015. They had their commencement ceremony on May 27th at 8:00 p.m. at the arena, and it was a great turnout. And many of our 30 kids there in the Paramore area that graduated from PKZ this year all attended Jones High. And to go along with that, I'd like to thank Orlando City Soccer. Yesterday, they gave $10,000 to the students that graduated and the college students that we have at PKZ, $10,000. So I'd like to thank the Orlando City Foundation for that donation because it helps many of kids there who parents otherwise could not help them with tuition, help them with books, or even clothing, or some of the other things that's needed throughout the year. That $10,000 is gonna go a long way with keeping those kids in college. It might not seem like a lot, but when you don't have food, or you can't pay for your books there when you're away, you're more likely to fail or come back home without that degree. So thank you again, Orlando City Soccer. I'd like to thank GOBA. On May 30th, we did go out to the Ivy Lane Community Center, which they have partnered with Orlando RAC and also OCPS. They have started to mentor kids over there, and that has been such a success to where the children over in the Ivy Lane Corridor are saying, "When is my turn? I want a mentor." And they have really made a large footprint over there, also with the Orlando Housing Authority. They have brought over 400 books and built a little library there in the Resource Center. And we know it's so important during this summer break that our kids continue to read so, because they will lose part of what they learned during the school year if it's been found, if they're not reading throughout the year. So I'd like to thank GOBA for that. Also, they're gonna help out our budget here in District Five. They have their land surveyors and architecture design team that they're doing all this in kind. We have, for years, have had a issue with the water puddling inside of the park there. And they have their design team, which they'll be working with planning here, to alleviate that problem so that we can utilize that park even more so during the rainy months. They have plans, and I'm putting you on the spot now, to give us more storage area because our community center there in the Ivy Lane area is so small, much of it's used for storage areas. So we're not to have, we can't have as many programs as we like there. And GOBA is taking on that feat to see how we can utilize space that's available there for storage and use that facility more so. Can't thank you enough for what you're doing over there, GOBA. We had over 100 kids that, the Kiwanis came in through your partnership, that had eye exams, and we found at least 20 of them had poor vision. So that was 20 kids that were failing classes only because they couldn't see. So I'm looking for great things, and again, thank you for your partnership. I can go on and on about the work that you're doing there. And the Ivy Lane Corridor in my office is forever grateful. And the Mayor was speaking about economic development, which is one of, I know the Mayor's focus, and so is mine. We're working in unison on developing that Paramore Corridor for minority businesses. And I have another announcement. We brought, I know it's a loss to you, Commissioner, but we got Chef Eddie now over in District Five.
I'll still come visit.
That's right. So we do have Chef Eddie's there now in the City View Corridor of Paramore. We had ribbon cutting on Saturday, and it was a great, great event. Many people came out. They're going to have its spoken-word live band and just have great, amazing food there. And I know the city has been helping. Thank you, Walter, and I know Thomas isn't here. Thank your offices for helping this minority business thrive, and looking forward to great things there in that venue. And that's actually all I have for right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Six. Commissioner Rings.
Thank you, Mayor. And Commissioner Hill, since you've mentioned Chef Eddie's, I'd just like to say that I did have a conversation with someone that spoke highly of the restaurant being there at City View. And the amazing thing was that there were residents from City View now going down to visit Chef Eddie, so that's really good. And that's a great economic driver for the community. I'd like to also recognize and speak on the Mayor's Matching Grants, specifically Marcia Hope Goodwin. Where are you, Marcia? Oh, there you are. And also Julie Tindall. Julie, hey. These two guys work very hard. They work very hard to really pull this together. So I want to thank you so much. Julie does a lot of one-on-one mentoring, tutoring, helping, guiding, and those are the kinds of things, Mayor, that make your office looks good, specifically. Specifically, when it comes to quality care and trying to help and assist. And to see, I mean, I can go over the whole list, but I just wanted to kind of highlight Mount Sinai Junior Academy with science, technology, engineering, and they're including arts and math. So they have a STEAM initiative, which is really great. And also the Stop the Violence and Embrace, you know, this is a great thing. Jack works very hard, Jack Williams works very hard in trying to make a difference and do a lot of things to bring our community together, specifically to stop the violence. And so thank you so much for your help and assistance there. But this is just really, truly great, is having the National Congress of Black Women, the Orlando Chapter College for Kids Program. And I think they have over 300 kids, maybe 500 kids that's involved. Beverly, you want to stand up and just be recognized? Thank you so much for what you do too. And also our International Fringe Festival of Central Florida, the 24th Annual Kids Fringe, and this is just really super. So we're doing a lot of great things, and of course, like I said, we have plenty more on this list, but we're doing some great things in the city of Orlando. And we really appreciate trying to reach out to the community. And some of the activity that's not on here, and I'd just like to say this for Chief John Mina, who gave a presentation today concerning the Police Department and what they go through and how they deal with situations, and how he as a senior manager for the organization really makes a difference to making sure that the public believes and trusts in the Orlando Police Department. And of course, I'm a product of the Orlando Police Department. Chief Mina used to work for me as a Detective Sergeant when I was Captain in CID. So we do go a long way back from that perspective, and he knows, just as I do, about community-oriented policing and what it means to do some foot patrol and then get out there into the community and really make a difference with the community. So there are a lot of things that we really have to do and improve upon, our Police Department, our Fire Department, and all our departments, public works too. You know, roadways are important too, right, Rick Howard? So we have to do a lot to really take care of our city and make our city be the very best city in the whole wide world, because we do love Orlando. We can tell by the number of visitors that actually come here. Over 62 million people have visited Orlando, and they visit with a purpose. And so we provide the opportunities for them, and we want to provide opportunities for our citizenry as well. And then I'd also like to recognize Samantha Wallace. She's not here today, but she had her Man Up and Cook event. And this was held at the Central Florida Fairgrounds on Saturday. And the Police Department was there with their mobile kitchen, the Fire Department, churches, and other community organizations. So it was a great event to see all. Dean Purnell was there from the FAMU Law School. So it was good to see the community thoroughly engaged. And then also at Disney's Epcot, the Early Learning Coalition celebrated its first five-year gala, celebrating taking care of our youth. And our youth were there performing for us, and they raised over $100,000 that night. So that was a great event. And Mayor, that's all I have to report, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. District One, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get to the agenda, I just wanted to remind everybody, a couple weeks ago out at Lake Nona at the Medical City, we had the grand opening of the Veterans Hospital. And it's your facility. You paid for it with your tax dollars. It's a magnificent building. If you don't get out to that way, I'd encourage you, please come out to Lake Nona Medical City and see that building. It's gorgeous. It's something we can all be proud of. It's finally open. And as I tell people, Lake Nona has grown rapidly, but I think with the opening of this and not only employees coming, but patients coming from the area, I think Lake Nona's really gonna take off now because we've got plus or minus 3,000 people a day coming for either work and/or treatment. So I'll remind you of that. On the agenda, also my congrats to the Mayor's Matching Grant winners. We can help facilitate, but it takes you to put the manpower behind it and make things happen. So congratulations to those winners. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for taking a fresh look at Item C5. The BZA Board of Zoning Appeal does a great job, and they may have gotten this one right, I'm not sure, but I think it's worth a fresh look. So thank you for taking the time to take another look, and we'll examine that. And then finally, J5, SitePlan Inc., as I've said many times, people that invest time and money in our community help us grow. And so thank you for investing in Orlando, and we'll do our small part with the match. So with that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. District Two, Commissioner Ortiz.
Well, Mayor, mine is gonna be very simple. I just want to second the words of Commissioner Jim Gray and Commissioner Ings in reference to congratulate the recipients of the Mayor's Matching Grant and SitePlan also. With that, I'll yield my, or I yielded my time to Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, you kind sir.
All right. District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you. I'll take the next 45 minutes talking a little bit about the center, what we're doing here. Okay, I'm sorry, just teasing. Let me just cover a couple of quick things, and they're important. And I'll start with SitePlan and then Item C18. Thank you very much for your leadership. It's an example of what we're continuing to do throughout our community, and that's promote business. And we're happy to play a small part in that and look forward to your continued growth. So thank you very much. If I don't say this to start off with, I'm certain that somebody's gonna yell at me, but mummies of the world are here, right, Joanne? Okay. The opportunity to support y'all is an honor for us, and we love doing that. And to go one step further and celebrate in your 60th anniversary, mummies of the world are here. So let's give them a round of applause. A great press conference, great kickoff. It is a good example of why we need a Science Center here, because of the work that's there. So I appreciate you, and you can find out more information by going to OSC.org. Right? See? I listen, I don't think I do, but I do. I also want to mention just a couple of the Mayor's Matching Grants because they're important, not only to the city, but especially in District Three. The Downtown Credo Group and the work that they've done out of our district. The Fringe Festival, of course. Orlando Ballet, I see they're here, Orlando Rep. And of course, the Dueling Dragons. And I so appreciate the chance to spend time with the kids and to the work that they do there. So it's important to our community. And Mayor, I appreciate the fact that we continue to fund this because it has an incredible impact in a small way, but it's a way to harness the energy of our communities, and I appreciate your continued leadership on that. On the agenda also, I want to thank Florida Hospital for their continued partnership, especially as it relates to Sunrail. I'm excited to see on the agenda, Item C12, establishing the North Orlando Quiet Zone. I think probably when I joined the city almost 10 years ago, I had people tell me that we had to quiet, make quiet zones, and it was a great idea. We all think it's a great idea, but it takes time for us to have this happen. And so C12 is establishing that zone, and then also we recognizing the fact that we are taking a city, a state matching grant to complete the balance of the city of Orlando. So we'll have a quiet zone throughout the entire city. That's an important thing for us, and I think it's an important thing for our individual neighborhoods. The OPD's Neighborhood Watch Division is instituting a new training for residents on ways they can help keep their community safe. And I appreciate what Chief Mina has done in helping to promote these kind of creative ways to do it. By reporting suspicious activity while they're walking their dogs. Dog walker watch training will take place on June 16th at College Park and then on June 25th at Rosemont Community Center. Please contact my office for information. We're asking those who spend time out walking their dogs to be more alert, and we have a chance to help continue to make our community safer. Join us for the District Three National Night Out Kickoff Party on June 24th over Orlando Fashion Square from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. This evening is devoted to bringing recognition to National Night Out, taking place this year on August 4th, 2015. National Night Out promotes the police-community partnerships that are vital to keeping Orlando a safe city. This event will allow citizens to visit informational tables where they can learn more about the city, public safety and awareness, how to start their own neighborhood watch program, all while interacting with the first responders from both Orlando Police and Orlando Fire Departments. Thanks in part to the generosity of Orlando Fashion Square, the event will have an outside area where residents can view the OPD's mounted patrol, K-9 units, as well as the touch-a-truck where kids can come and touch all kinds of trucks, kind of a fun thing for them to do. Inside, there'll be a kid zone with a bounce house, face painting, and much more, free food and giveaways. Entertainment will be provided by a DJ, and so please stop by. That's June 24th at 6:00. On Friday, July 3rd, the Baldwin Park Independence Day Bash will be at the Harbor Park in Baldwin Park from 5:30 to 9:30. So you can make two nights of great fireworks in the city of Orlando, one at Baldwin Park, and then come down and join us at Lake Eola. And one other quick thing I want to mention, or two things quickly. One is the Lou Gardens. On any Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00, this is one of those small things that we do that's a lot of fun, get to meet a master gardener from the University of Florida, the best university in the country. And, I'm sorry, did that slip out again?
Yeah, it did.
I'm sorry. I apologize. It just slipped out. This team is happy to help you with all the turf problems you have, especially what's going on in your lawn, and so they'll be able to bring soil testing and do that soil testing right there and help you exactly with what you need. This is one of those features that we, one of those things that we offer to our citizens. And I appreciate Robert Bowden and the work that he does over there. For more information, go to lougardens.org. And then last, of course, I'll be abstaining on CRA Items Three and Four when it comes to that. I'll mention it again. And that's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Four. Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. And if anybody tuned into the news over the weekend probably saw that there was a little bit of controversy over the pink bunnies in Lake Como Park. And I just wanted to let you all know that I did place two pink bunnies. They were private donations in memory of my former aide Chase Smith, who died, and he was here for seven and a half years and went to work for Mayor Jacobs. And one of his favorite things was to play the Easter Bunny for the children at Lake Como, Colonial Town, and Langford Park. So we got private donations, put these two statues up, and a fellow, I guess, got upset about the pink bunny. He said it was tacky and this and that, and he wanted it gone. And I said, "You know what? I'll just move it to Colonial Town." Colonial Town agreed to take it. I thought I had it solved. Well, over the weekend, the Lake Como folks had a Save the Bunny campaign, and chained the bunny down and had their kids take pictures. And so they, and so they took a vote of the Neighborhood Association, decided they wanted to have the bunny stay. So this fellow has brought up some concerns about the policy, and since now I'm probably gonna have to buy a bunny for Colonial Town as well, I probably have met that substantial threshold of $1,000 now for it to be a major memorial. I'll be bringing that back here to I'll be bringing that back here to council just out of an abundance of caution, just to let this fellow know, yes, he'll have his public hearing, but he'll have to deal with a lot of upset children if he takes, if he wants to take that bunny out. But again, this was in memory of a devoted public servant. We just wanted to do something nice. This is something that's really become a part of a lot of people's Easters, and I just hope this fellow does not go after Santa Claus and the Tooth Fairy next, after the Easter Bunny. So again, I didn't, I just tried to do a nice thing, got it all approved through Parks and Recreation, and you know, we'll just, we'll just make sure that if he wants a public hearing, he'll get it. And again, I miss Chase every day. They get a little emotional over the whole thing. It was just nice to see people supporting him and what he stood for while he was here. On the agenda today, on the Mayor's Neighborhood Matching Grant, we have Colonial Town, Central Florida Leadership Academy, the Girl Scouts of Central Florida, and the National College of Black Women in District Four. So thank you, everyone, for participating in this great program. On Item C2, Urban Chickens, I'm delighted to see that we're going to keep the pilot program going. I'm hoping eventually we can get that as a citywide program. Again, chickens aren't running rampant all over the city. This is about 100 households, and it's actually being instituted by the University of Florida, Institute of Food and Agricultural Sciences. And Dennis Mudge does a great job overseeing the program. He says these are some of the best-kept chickens that he's seen anywhere. And again, this is just part of the slow food movement, people growing their own food. And, you know, we just had that scare about, you know, chickens and eggs being contaminated. You don't have that when you have backyard hens. And I have three of them myself, and they're just a lot of fun. It's a great program. I hope we can continue doing the urban chicken program and bringing that citywide. Another item on the agenda is actually Commissioner Stewart's district, but I abut it. It's on Item C13, getting a, trying to obtain a Community Planning Technical Assistance Grant for Corrine Drive. I know there's a lot of concerns about that corridor, and it's artificially wide, 75 feet wide. We have a lot of speeding in the area, trying to make it more neighborhood-friendly. I fully support this as someone who, you know, Corrine becomes Forest, becomes Virginia. Work on some ideas to kind of maybe traffic calm that a bit and make it a better corridor for pedestrians and safer area for folks in the area. And on Item H5, I liked seeing the fact that we're going to have a full-time officer at the Blankner K-8. I think it's very, very important as if we're going to be doing these K-8 schools, that we, and they're not treated as an elementary school. You need to have a full-time officer. If you have eighth graders, because they, when they start getting a little bit bigger, they start getting in trouble. So I think it's important to have that full-time officer there. I'm delighted to see the funding for that. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Hill, S. Item C1 and the one item from C5. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Without objection, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. Let's see, the first item of business is accepting meeting minutes from the advisory board. We'll just take a short 30-second recess, and those that had something on the consent agenda that would like to
Hurry back.
Conclude their time here, may do so.
First string's going out, second string's coming in.
Would you like my solution? You're impressive. Couldn't make any about it. It's all about Easter.
Next is the Tooth Fairy. That is kind of clever.
I remember 33, which was the Central 150 Unit Department.
Mayor should be
Next, he's after Santa Claus and the Tooth Fairy.
In honor of Jeff Bush's announcement.
Has he already made it? Has he made it?
He's going live as we speak. Can we patch in and go ahead?
Yeah. Okay, let's bring the meeting back to order, and if you would take your conversations out to the rotunda, please. All right, so our first item is the meeting minutes of the advisory board for the 22nd of April. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion is
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheen. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two is approving the CRA minutes for May the 4th. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. All right, Walter, number three.
Yes, Mayor, good afternoon. Number three is approving the homeless outreach funding agreement, and staff is requesting the approval of the homeless outreach funding agreement for the period of 15 months, subject to review and approval by the city attorney's office. An authorization for the chairman and executive director to execute such agreement. Staff also requests authorization of expenditures from the Downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Trust Fund in the amount of $75,000 for the homeless outreach funding agreement.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Stewart.
Yes, I filed my abstention of information with this clerk.
Okay, Commissioner Stewart is abstaining from this vote due to an appearance of conflict. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Walter.
Okay, number four is approving the amoeba funding agreement and security agreement for Little Kings and Queens. And so the staff is requesting approval of the amoeba funding agreement, security agreement between the CRA and the Little Kings and Queens Learning Center LLC, and authorization for the chairman and executive director of the CRA to execute said agreement, subject to the review and approval of the city attorney's office.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheen. Commissioner Stewart.
I need to abstain again for an appearance of conflict of interest.
Okay. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five, Walter.
And number five is one that we had, at least the council had talked about earlier, with Site Plan, which would be creating 28 jobs to the local community at an average of $64,000. Staff is requesting the approval of the high-wage, high-value program funding agreement between the city, CRA, and the Site Plan Inc., and authorization for the chairman of the CRA and the executive director of CRA to execute the agreement, subject to the review and approval of the city attorney's office and the approval of the expenditures from the Downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Area Trust Fund in the amount up to $98,000 in high-wage, high-value job creation program for Site Plan Inc.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Conclude the business for the CRA, Walter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we will stand adjourned, and we will convene the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors. All we have are accepting meeting minutes from the NID Advisory Council for May the 13th, 2015. Is there a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So we will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting. We will reconvene the city council meeting without objection. That brings us to new business, and we are at the time of year that we are electing new mayor pro temps for one year each. So I will take a nomination for mayor pro tem one. Commissioner Stewart.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Ortiz for mayor pro tem one.
Second.
Motion and a second for Commissioner Ortiz. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Commissioner Ortiz, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so congratulations, Commissioner Ortiz. I'll now accept a motion for mayor pro tem two. Commissioner Stewart.
Mayor, I nominate Jim Gray.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Ings is recognized to nominate Commissioner Jim Gray for mayor pro tem two, seconded by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Congratulations, Commissioner Gray. Congratulations, Commissioner Ortiz. I'll have your sashes prepared and delivered to your offices. Okay, we moved Item C1 to new business, and that relates to an amendment to the interlocal agreement between the city and Metro Plan, the Metro Plan Organization. Is Virginia Whittington here?
Yes, she is.
Virginia, why don't you come on up just for a minute? Commissioner Ings had a question about the item, and the item is an expansion of the Metro Plan Board to include a MAC position that would bring our membership from 19 to 20. Can you illuminate us on the reason we're doing that?
Correct. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. In December of 2014, the Metro Plan Orlando Board approved an additional seat on the Metro Plan Orlando Board to include the municipal advisory committee, which had previously served in an advisory capacity to the Metro Plan Orlando Board. With a recent change in legislation, this authorized metropolitan planning organizations to go from 19 members to up to 25, which does allow this within statute. The municipal advisory committee was initially created because they wanted a voting seat on the Metro Plan Orlando Board, and for the last 19 years, they have served as such in an advisory capacity. The change in legislation allowed this committee to become a voting member. Metro Plan Orlando Board took action December 10th, 2014, and subsequently, the action that is before you today is an administrative formality because an interlocal agreement needs to be signed whenever there's a change to the composition of the Metro Plan Orlando Board. Previous to this, the interlocal agreement that you would have signed would have been done based on the Central Florida Expressway Authority. That changed from the Orlando, Orange County Expressway Authority to the Central Florida Expressway Authority. That was the latest change that would have been made. And so this is administratively, this is consistent with what was done previously. So it is allowed by Florida statute. The municipal advisory committee members would be subject to dues based on their population, and that has also been presented to the Metro Plan Orlando Board. And 17 of the current 19 members have already approved their agreements, and we have received those back. So the city of Orlando and Seminole County are the last two to get theirs in.
Okay, and the makeup is, for the most part, population-based with representation between Seminole, Orange, and Osceola County, and then the largest city in each of those three counties. And this would give representation to the smaller cities that aren't one of the largest cities in either Osceola, Orange, or Seminole. We happen to be the largest city in Orange and have two representatives
Correct.
On Metro Plan. Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. And the reason I brought this issue up is because from the guidelines of the federal legislation as it relates to metro plans and cities becoming members, the county has like seven or six members based upon their size, et cetera. But it's the smaller cities that are under the population threshold, and what has occurred is that all of the small cities have come together and added up their population so that they can equal or be more like the size of the city of Orlando. And I don't think that that's the intention of what the federal legislation nor the state legislation is actually saying. Now, what Virginia did say is true from the standpoint that the number of members for that NPO board has increased. That is correct. But it's still a matter of how you actually get on the board. And so, and that's why I'm saying they do not meet that real threshold. Now, I voted against it on the Metro Plan Board along with some other members, et cetera, but it did pass. And it has to go through certain municipalities, the Orange County, to all agree on that, and it's here before us today. And so, and that's why I'm voicing my concern and making sure that the whole city council is aware, because wherein Commissioner Ortiz serves as an alternate for both myself and Mayor Buddy Dyer, many of the other council members are not privy to the information and the discussion that went on during this particular time. And just like you said, it had been for several years that this issue has been brought up and it has been fought against and pushed back and that kind of thing until we kind of got to this point. And what I wanted to make sure was that this council was aware from the standpoint, because it's all about federal funds as it relates with transportation, that we're not in error or anything like that. So I don't have any personal fight in this. It's just a matter of what's fundamentally right and abiding by the law. Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I was there that day, and I was voting for you, Mayor, and I voted for it because I do believe that the interpretation of the federal government, we don't have a, we don't have a clear interpretation. It's hard to tell if that's what they intended or not. But what is clear to me is that we do need clear representation from each one of our cities. I think the community's opinion is very important, and I believe this is going to do really good to our community as a whole, so.
I take that as a motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
There's second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. Discussion, hearing none, all. Commissioner Hill.
I just, since I wasn't in the room, I wanted to know what was the conflict.
They hadn't been able to do it in the past because we would have had to eliminate somebody else's position in order to give them that position, and that's
Statutorily, we were capped at 19.
Everybody got a voice in the room.
Right.
All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, 6-1 with Commissioner Ings in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Thanks for coming over on short notice. Okay, we have, we'll move to hearings. We have two hearings. The first is on the proposed approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Fourth amended restated development order for the Lake Nona development of regional impact. Do I have a motion, Commissioner Gray?
You do. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Let's open the public hearing related to this. Is there anyone, Madam Clerk, that has turned in a card for this particular hearing?
No.
Then we will close the hearing. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The second hearing is an order approving rescission of the Orlando Regional Healthcare System Development of Regional Impact Development Order. Do I have a motion on that item, Commissioner Sheen?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone for the public that would like to testify on this matter?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we'll open it for public testimony in any event and then close it. Discussion, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, hearings ordinances on first reading. Madam Clerk, if you would read that first ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 2015-31, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to the city's growth management plan, providing the summer 2015 package of GMP amendments pursuant to the expedited state review process. Amending the GMP relating to the Paramore Comprehensive Plan, amending future land use Figure LU1 relating to residential densities, amending conservation element policy 1.4.1 relating to certain state and federal environmental regulatory processes, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use maps, providing for severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter?
No.
Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Hearings ordinances on second reading. We have 10 of those from the last council meeting, and as we described then, about a year ago, I asked city staff to go through all of our ordinances and to clean them up in terms of not making substantive changes, but if there is obsolete language, or they have been superseded by state statute, or they simply are things like you can't tie your horse up to the hitching post that are outdated to update those ordinances. So these are the first 10, and then we have seven on second reading, and we will continue to bring them forward as they are completed. So let's start with number one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 201- Ordinance two zero one four dash five zero, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending Article One, Chapter thirty-five of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, entitled Lakes and Boating, by amending Sections three five point oh one and three five point oh six, to clarify the intent, and by adding Section three five point oh eight one, providing for codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public like to testify on this matter?
No.
Discussion among commissioners.
What?
Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. So the motion passes. Celeste, just tell me if we do have somebody.
I will. Thank you, Mayor, for your patience.
That's okay. She's doing fantastic, and we're getting our money's worth out of her today. There's a lot of titles to be read. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number two zero one four dash five one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending Article One, Chapter five zero of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, entitled Public Service Companies, by amending Sections five zero point zero one and five zero point zero five, to clarify the intent and deleting in its entirety and reserving for future use Article Two, Chapter fifty of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, entitled Railroads, providing for codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none on. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number two zero one four dash five five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending Title Two of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, by deleting Chapter forty-four entitled Palm Brokers, Junk, and Secondhand Dealers in its entirety and reserving for future use, providing for codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none on. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash two two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending Chapter seven, Article eleven, entitled Supplier Diversity of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, by clarifying Section seven point one one oh two, Veteran Business Enterprise Preference, providing for codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none on. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash two three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending Articles two, five, eight, nine, ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen, entitled City Attorney, City Clerk, Rules and Procedures for City Council, Rules of Order Before Boards and Commissions, Employee Benefits, Public Records, Retention and Disposition, Boards and Audit Board, by deleting Article thirty-three. Naval Training Center Community Redevelopment Agency and Advisory Board, and by deleting Sections two point two seven and two point one oh seven, clarifying duties and responsibilities of officials and board members, and deleting sections that have become obsolete, providing for codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone that would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none on. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Number six, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash two four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, deleting in its entirety and reserving for future use Chapter fifteen of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, entitled Camping Grounds, providing for codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none on. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number seven.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash two five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, deleting in its entirety and reserving for future use Chapter forty-seven of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, entitled Plumbing Code, providing for codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none on. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number eight.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash two six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, deleting in its entirety and reserving for future use Chapter forty-seven A of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, entitled Air Conditioning, Refrigeration, Heating, and Ventilating Code, providing for codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, and I'll take that as a second. Commissioner Stewart, is there anyone who would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number nine, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash two seven, an ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, pursuant to Section one six three point three eight seven, Florida statutes two thousand fourteen, amended, amending ordinances enacted July twelfth, nineteen eighty-two, June eighteenth, nineteen ninety, October twenty-third, two thousand, June twenty-fifth, two thousand seven, February twenty-second, two thousand ten, and February tenth, two thousand fourteen, creating a Community Redevelopment Trust Fund for the Downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Area, amending references to the Community Redevelopment Plan for the Downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Area to include the Plan Amendment approved by the City Council on May fourth, two thousand fifteen, providing an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone that would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And number ten, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash one five, an ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to picketing, amending Section forty-three point four two of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ings. Okay, we do have several people that would like to speak on this item, so Terry Falbo. If you'll give your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. Be Terry, then Doug Head, then Rich Sewicka, and then Cynthia Harris.
Terry Falbo, two thousand one Glen Ridge Way, three two seven nine two. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm speaking to urge that this change not be adopted today, and instead, that it be, that somebody make a motion to table it for further discussion and clarification of intent and possible reintroduction after there's rewording for, to better reflect the intent. First, I'd like to say that though I'm not currently residing within city limits, and I'm not speaking right now as an official representative of any organization, there are many citizens and organizations within the city limits who are concerned about this change to the picketing ordinance, as I am. And some wanted to come, but they were unable either due to work and/or being out of town. Many labor organizations and labor attorneys had contacted city staff and officials regarding this change, and they were, the way they were interpreting it, and they had been told that the item was pulled from the agenda. This was like last month. So they were surprised when it appeared on the agenda for today without any real changes from the way that it was or without any clearer wording. Second, I wanted to note that what the ordinance and the change are not about, because I think in some of the communication back and forth, some people in defense of the ordinance were saying, well, I don't want somebody, you know, out there being violent in front of my home and things like that, which of course, nobody, nobody wants that, and that's not permitted. Section eleven of Florida State Statute four four seven point oh nine already makes it unlawful to picket the domicile of an appointed or elected official. So nobody would ever have to worry about that, as long as that Florida State Statute is in effect any kind of picketing. The ordinance is not about violent or noisy gatherings or picketing. There are other ordinances and laws regarding that. And actually, if you look at Florida State Statute four four seven point oh nine, Section thirteen, it says that it's unlawful to engage in picketing by force and violence or to picket in such a manner as to prevent ingress or egress to and from any premise or to picket other than in a reasonable and peaceable manner. So this ordinance is about peaceful, quiet, silent picketing, actually, and the restrictions that there are on that. And it's talking about, it defines residences as the dwelling, the residence or dwelling of any person. It's making it unlawful to peacefully picket a place of employment involved in a labor dispute if the picketing is quote "before" or "about" a residence or dwelling of any person, and that's pretty vague language, I think most people would agree. So here's the concern. I'm going to talk about some recent picketing that has occurred in the past year that when some people were talking about this and looking at it, they were concerned that it would be deemed unlawful. For instance, nursing homes, long-term care facilities in, you know, that are in the city, some of them are organized by SEIU, Service Employees International Union, and within the past year, they have picketed in front of these, and they call the people residents. This is their residence, and it's not specifically excluded by this ordinance. It only specifically excludes hotels and motels, but no other residences are excluded in the current ordinance. So recently, like within the past year, there were some changes made where funding was decreased, and only three disposable briefs were allowed per resident that needed these in these places. So some SEIU members were outside leafleting, handbillings, and alerting the public about this, because they thought this was wrong. A lot of them were going and buying disposable briefs for their patients themselves because of this. So their concern is that something like that might be deemed illegal, because it's about or before a residence. There were building trades in front of the VA within the past year that were handbilling because of the new VA in Lake Nona. They were handbilling because of concerns of quality of plumbing, electrical, and other work that they felt was not up to standard. And they were concerned that this, the VA was already, they had residents in the long-term care facility, but it was still partially under construction there. People were concerned that the protests around the minimum wage and expanding those protests to different types of restaurants and trying to expand the minimum wage to people that are not even covered by the minimum wage now, like people that get tips and things like that. If you have restaurants or other businesses in a mixed-use building, would that be allowed? Now, I know people have said from the podium that, no, this is not meant to be this way, but the wording, if you actually read the wording on the ordinance, it is not clear at all. So if that's the case, then I think there needs to be better wording to better reflect what the intent is, if the intent is not to restrict those types of things. And I would be willing to serve on a committee to help with the wording.
I'm sorry, I missed that your time has run.
My time's up. Okay, okay, I was done anyway. Okay, thank you.
You know what, man? Why don't we defer this and give everybody an opportunity to meet with our council? Just, there's no urgency in getting this one done, so there's a little bit of interest, I think, from making sure that we have the definitions, because I'm not sure whether we want nursing homes or not nursing homes, so why don't we cook this one a little bit more?
And just have an opportunity to discuss it, and we'll get it back on in July.
Yeah. So if everybody's okay with that, we'll just defer.
Mayor.
And I tell you what, anybody that still wants to talk, since you're here, I will let you go ahead and do that.
I was just saying, I would definitely like to meet with them to hear more in detail what their arguments are in terms of specifics, because I think she brought up some interesting points.
Okay, but anybody that signed up that feels like talking can talk.
I signed, and my name is Doug Head, eight hundred, one four one five Wes Robinson. I just wanted to congratulate you on deferring, and I look forward to having a conversation. I don't think this is a rush. When this ordinance was originally presented, it was presented as ministerial, and I think it seems to be a little bit more than ministerial, and so I think it's important to clear it up.
Well, the intent on all of these was not to change the law, but just to update the law. Rich, real briefly, Rich Sewicka, Council for the Central Labor Council. I want to say that the legal department has communicated with us several times about, with our firm several times, about this issue. There was a little snafu with some of our lawyers being out of town, and I want to, we appreciate the opportunity to further engage the legal department about some of our concerns. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Commissioner Sheehan?
Go ahead and take the public first.
Cynthia Harris?
Yes, Mayor. I wanted to state on record that we would like the public to be able to be involved in this. I understand that you want to meet with other reps and defer this for now, and we appreciate that, but we also like the public, not just union leaders, to be involved in this process.
Public's always involved. That's exactly what you're doing right now, is being involved.
Thank you.
Mayor, if we could have a motion to defer it to July fifteenth, or when it's next July.
Okay, wait, I still have one more person to speak. Luanne Gelzer.
I want to echo what everyone else is saying, but I want to make sure not just the public, but civic engagement organizations, and just not the unions would be involved in getting this information. And hopefully, it will be displayed where we can find it easily, so if you're making changes when the meeting might transpire. So transparency is very, very important. So we kind of need to know if it's going to be under, and I'll get with you, Celeste, but will we need to look under the attorney when they're meeting for any meetings, or will it be a separate entity? So we'll know how to follow when you're meeting and when you're making these changes. That will be greatly, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, what date do we?
I forgot to say my name. I'm sorry. Luanne Gelzer, seventy-six, seventy-four St. Stevenson Court, Orlando zip three two eight oh, no, three two eight three five today. Thank you very much.
Man, what date do you want us to defer to?
July council meeting.
I don't know what date that is.
July thirteenth.
July thirteenth.
Okay. Commissioner Ortiz, you had a motion?
Yes, sir. Motion to move, to defer the deferred.
July thirteenth, city council meeting. Second by Commissioner Sheehan, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
I'd like, I had it.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sheehan?
Mayor, I'd just like to say something. I've had my car vandalized many, many times here at City Hall. I've been through about a thousand dollars worth of tires, and, you know, I certainly don't want that kind of activity brought to my home. It's scary enough when someone's vandalizing your car, and we finally got the trees cut down so we can see, so if you're all going to, if somebody's going to keep vandalizing my car, we can see you now. But again, my personal, I take my personal safety very seriously. You know, people can express their opinions all day long, but when they start getting to violence, that's where I draw the line, and I'm not going to have it at my house. Absolutely not at my home, you know. You can do whatever you want to me here, people can say whatever they want, but I draw the line when it comes to my personal safety at my home. I've actually had to have an officer at my home because of threats, and I'm just going to say that, you know, I've demonstrated for many things over many years, everything from a woman's right to choose to gay rights and everything else, and I've never, ever had to take violence, you know, or to do what, to, you know, to do anything violent in order to get my point across. So I just like to say that I feel very strongly about the prohibition around someone's home, just because of my own personal experience.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, sir. I want to add on about the meetings or transparency or accountability, is every meeting that I have is an open meeting. What the different unions and different organizations, what they have done is call my office or email for appointment, so that they can tell me what issues they have with things. they can tell me what issues they have with things, so that I can advocate with staff or with legal, so that we can come to a common agreement. So if there's anyone, if you're waiting on folks to feed you the information of what's going on in meetings, I would invite you to call my off, call, I don't, call my office for a meeting, send me an email, that's all, that's all I request, so that I can give you the information. But you're going to have to participate versus waiting on others to disseminate the information, come in and let your voices be heard. I think I have, since I've been in office, the second will make a year, and, and it's up to public record, you can look at it, I've had over five hundred meetings, so many people throughout the community have came in letting their voices be heard. One thing I haven't done, and anybody that's, send me an email, I make sure I return that email within twenty-four hours, I pride myself on that. I have not turned down one member of the community, whether they were pro Regina Hill or foe Regina Hill, I make sure everybody has a voice here at City Hall that requests one with me.
Okay, anything further than on Commissioner Ortiz's motion, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries, and this item is deferred to the July thirteenth meeting. All right, Madam Clerk, you're not done yet, ordinance is first reading number one.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash two one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city certain land generally located north of Crandon Avenue, east of Formosa Avenue, south of Oglesby Avenue, and west of Clay Street, addressed as eighteen sixty Oglesby Avenue, and comprised of point three two three acres of land, more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as residential low intensity on the city's official future land use maps, and designating the property as the R two A one dash two family district on the city's official zoning maps, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz, so I misspoke on the seven first reads, they are not ordinances that are simply cleaning up language, these are all substantive, either annexing or amending PDs, so these are not the same as the ones we just heard on second reading, these are actually substantive ordinances. Okay, so is there anyone like to testify on this annexation? Discussion among commissioners, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash two nine, an ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the planned development zoning district regulations for the Lake Nona planned development, generally located north of the Orange Osceola County Line, south of Dowden Road, east of Boggy Creek Road, and west of Narcusi Road, and comprised of six thousand nine hundred and sixty acres, more or less, amending the planned development district's development standards, site plans, and conditions of development, directing amendment of the official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz, anyone want to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash three zero, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to density and intensity bonuses, amending provisions of the land development code relating to the maximum available density and intensity bonuses in certain zoning districts, and to application submittal requirements for a bonus, providing criteria for approval of a bonus, including options for minimum required design enhancements, providing bonus standards for the PD zoning district, and amending provisions relating to the required public art contribution for bonuses in the AC dash three A zoning district, providing technical, grammatical, and organizational amendments, providing legislative findings and for severability, codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion. Second.
Is that Commissioner Sheehan, commit, motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ing, is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash three two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located at the northeast corner of West Grant Street and Lucerne Terrace, and comprised of one point one zero acres of land, more or less, as planned development district with the traditional city and special plan zoning overlay districts on the city's official zoning maps, providing for amendment of the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart, is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash three three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending Chapter fifty-eight, Part four K of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, entitled Recycling Collection Center, by amending Sections five eight point eight, five eight point eight oh one, five eight point eight oh two, and five eight point eight oh three, to clarify the intent and amending Chapter sixty-six, Part two of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, entitled Definitions, by amending Section six six point two, to include and define donation bin, recycling collection center heavy, and recycling collection center light, providing for codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Ing, second by Commissioner Stewart, is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number six.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash three four, an ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to the Florida Building Code, amending Article One, Chapter thirteen, Orlando City Code to adopt the Florida Building Code, fifth edition, two thousand fourteen, providing local administrative amendments to the Florida Building Code, and ultimate design wind speeds for buildings and other structures within the city, providing for transmittal to the Florida Building Commission, severability, codification, correction of Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Ing, take that as a second.
I didn't hear Robert.
Okay, anybody want to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And number seven, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number two zero one five dash three six, an ordinance of the City of Orlando, granting CRS Central Rock and Supply Incorporated, a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the City of Orlando, outlining franchisees' duties and providing the terms and conditions under which franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz, is there anyone that would like to testify on the roll-off container franchise agreements? Discussion among commissioners, hearing done, all in favor of the motion to, motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So that concludes the official agenda of the Orlando City Council for today.